Hi, good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 20, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. I have a motion to call the meeting to order. Cynthia first, Lori second. All in favor? All right, we're just going to go right into executive session. We have a brief personnel matter to discuss, and we'll be back out at 7:30 for the public meeting. Do I have a motion to enter executive session? Cynthia, Lori second. All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, good evening again. Today's again Tuesday, April 20, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. We just finished up our executive session, and we opened up at 7 o'clock for executive session, and now we're back for the public portion of the meeting. If we could stand for our pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is your superintendent's introduction of your student.
Okay, so it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Lucas Ayamaza. Lucas is currently a senior who is really deciding right now on a lot of top universities of where he's going to go in the fall. Lucas is a member of the National Honor Society and the Italian National Honor Society. Lucas is a leader by nature. He is president of Habitat for Humanity, captain of the marching band, and captain of the bowling team. He's a member of our pit and jazz band, playing bass drum and scraper. Lucas is currently playing on our varsity football team and played varsity soccer, all while being a member of our stock market and finance club. And Lucas, he's very impressive. You'll hear from him. He convinced me to start a club this year in the middle of the year, so if you could go up there and just give your presentation. Thank you.
So as a senior heading into not only a new school year, but my last one at Tuckahoe High School, I was disappointed that some of the clubs were put on hold due to COVID restrictions. So as this year has progressed, we've started to see more and more signs of returning to what was or what we once had within our school. Our sports teams that initially had their seasons postponed have received or have already gotten the chance to play their seasons this year, and we are now able to come into school every day again, which had me thinking, what about Habitat for Humanity? I knew I couldn't have been the only one in the club wondering the same thing, but as the club's president, I asked to sit down with our superintendent over Zoom, and she agreed. I said to Dr. Goodman, this year, we have been able to travel on buses into away places for sports, so is there a possibility to bring Habitat back before this year ends? And she responded to my delight, yes, and now our Habitat Club has been approved by the board. We are so excited to resume builds, and I'd like to thank you all for making this a possibility. Our school play looks a little bit different this year, but our students did an excellent job. There are three more viewings of the Spring Musical on April 23rd, 24th, and 25th with tickets online for $20 each. Students in grades 7 to 12 have been working since January on creating the Tuckahoe movie version of Freaky Friday. Congratulations to the high school science Olympia team, who medaled in three events. Lastly, we had two assembly programs sponsored by the PTA on our virtual day yesterday. The high school will be viewed, a panel discussion on both theater and the arts. The middle school students saw a presentation on volunteering through an organization called From Volunteer New York. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the PTA in the future. And then I'm going to move on to the athletics. So we are closing out our fall season, too, with the following sports. Varsity and JV volleyball finished the regular season against Pelham last Thursday and played in a first-round playoff game this evening. Overall, the team worked hard and was competitive in many matches. Varsity football is now 3-2 after losing at Dobbs Ferry and are heading into their final homecoming game against Haldene at home on April 24th with a 1:30 kickoff. This week, two of our players, Luis Chivetta and Michael Ananziata, were recognized for the Low-Hud Play of the Week, which was an 80-yard touchdown reception. Cheerleading, the girls did an amazing job supporting our team in the first year back after a two-year hiatus without any cheerleading at all. What a difference. We plan on going to a full competition in the fall. For band, we want to thank Mr. Griffey for his 17 years at the Pelham and directing our band through thick and thin times and rain and snow. You all are really the best. Prior to the game on Saturday, we will be honoring our seniors for Senior Day, where each student/athlete presents their parent with a traditional orange rose. In addition, all week was Spirit Week with a different theme daily, leading up to our senior class parade on Friday, May 23rd, from 5:00 to 6:30, where seniors marched up to the football field where the prom 2021 King and Queen, along with the court, were unveiled. We will be officially announcing the entire court with their parents at halftime of the homecoming game. Thank you for having me here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. I don't know if you realize, but our volleyball team could not, unfortunately, could not play tonight because they were quarantined, and we want to thank our girls for all the hard work they put in, and we're so sorry that this happened, and I just think you all did. They had such great spirit, and they played so well, so I wanted to thank them. And I also want to put in a plug for the senior musical. It was amazing. I suggested everybody buy tickets and watch it, and Kathy Mosher and Mr. Duchesneau and everybody involved did a great job, and if you watch it, you'll see some of our teachers and staff are in it, too.
Oh, nice.
Playing themselves.
All right, cool.
Thank you so much, and I know Louis has a game now, so thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, so yesterday, April 19th, was the cutoff or the closing of the board candidate petitions for this year's election. So I'm going to turn it over to the district clerk now, who will announce the results of the board candidate petition.
Thank you. The board candidate petition process is complete for the one open Board of Education seat. Cynthia Tate is the only person to submit a nominating petition and therefore is the only person nominated for the seat.
All right, great, thank you. All right, next is our comments by the board. So let's go around. Lori, do you have any comments tonight?
Yes, I want to say that I am so thrilled to have our cheerleaders back on. Like, I have just been over the moon to see them back and supporting our school community, and particularly our boys and our girls in the sports. It really is pretty awesome to see. They are excellent, they do a great job, and they lift the spirits of us all, and so thank you, girls, for coming back and doing such a great job. They'll tell you, I'm like their number-one fans. It's just what it is.
Thank you. Lori, you want to go?
I don't have much to say. I just wanted to make a comment to thank Dr. Goodman. I know that, you know, it's a little redundant, you know, there's a lot of praises that have been going on since Dr. Goodman's been handling things with this crazy school year, but I have to just say when I was out walking the dog and out at the stores this past week in particular, for some reason, I just ran into people who, just out of the blue, that I don't know really too well, saying how happy they are and how lucky they feel to have Dr. Goodman running the district. So I just want to mention that, I think it's worth saying, and that, you know, people are also mentioning the bond and excited about that. I know we're going to discuss that, but I just really want to say, as a representative of the community, there's a lot of really positive feedback that I receive, so thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Yes, go cheerleaders?
Yes.
Oh, me? Okay. Again, to echo what Lori just said, but also to highlight the fact that even though it's been a brief season, I'm so happy to see that the kids are able to play sports. I'm very sorry for the volleyball players, because they put a lot of work into it, and it's unfortunate that they didn't get to participate, but I do think there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and I'm glad that they're at least able to have some normalcy and be able to participate in the sports they love before they're either leaving the school or ending the year. Very happy to have the cheerleaders back and to have that school spirit injected into our games, because it does make a huge difference. I want to thank the PTA for their programs on the asynchronous day. It was definitely an enhancement and very much appreciated. Obviously, a lot of thanks to Dr. Goodman, Mr. Kio, all the administration, because we definitely would not be here today doing as much as we're doing as a district without strong leadership, and I think that that has become very, very clear, and we are eternally grateful. So thank you.
All right.
Yeah, Louis, when you go last, there's not much to say, but I'd like to also echo everyone's comments. I agree wholeheartedly. I think it's just amazing to see, like, when you're outside, like, yesterday I was walking too, and just to hear the kids out there, the sports and swing, I just feel like things are coming back, and it's just a great thing to see, and it wouldn't be possible without the leadership of Dr. Goodman and her entire administrative and teaching staff.
Yes.
So like, thank you so much, and like Laura said, the community, like, we hear nothing but positive feedback, and that's really nice to hear, and it's good to hear the kids out there, the voices of them.
I just have one more thing to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you, Cynthia, for serving again. It's a big commitment.
Yeah.
And thank you. It's actually a pleasure to do this with all of you.
Yeah, no, we have a good group, and it's a great team, and thank you for continuing. And to your family, who, you know...
Yes, we're sharing.
They might be flying out right now.
So I will repeat what was already said, because I agree with everything that was already said. I'll just use this opportunity to, this is our last regular meeting before the vote for the budget and for the trustee and for the bond. I think we have a workshop between now and then, but this is our last regular meeting, so I just want to urge everyone to please, please come out and vote. This budget, which we're going to hear about tonight, is exciting, because it really puts into action all of the strategic plan initiatives that we've been talking about. It's instrumental, I think, to keep the ball rolling on what we're trying to do and how we're trying to elevate the district. And of course, the bond is also very, very important and very exciting as well, so I just wanted to use this opportunity to encourage everyone to get out and vote, and if you're watching, your neighbor's not watching, you know, shove your neighbor, make sure they come out and vote.
Yeah, bring a friend.
We definitely need a lot of votes to come on out and support this budget and support this bond, so that's all I wanted to say. That's it, that's all I got. So the next item is the budget update, so we'll actually, is that right? Yeah? Yep, yep. Yeah.
Tonight, we will present our budget for the purpose of the Board of Education adoption. Previous iterations of this budget have been presented over the course of our previous meetings and have included in-depth analysis from our financial leaders, Ms. Liu, and I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Sparks, who did a lot on presenting, on making these presentations, our curriculum leader, Mr. Kio, who I couldn't have done this without, truly, and of course, our building leaders, Dr. Linehan, Mr. Marash, and Mr. Kilgallen. They have all presented this budget in depth, so I will try to go through it quicker this time. I tell the community who are watching tonight, please look at our budget, it's on our website, and you can watch our meetings. So again, I will provide a quick overview of our budget process. We began by reviewing our school boards, mission and strategic plan goals, and I'd like to say something right now about the school board, and thank you for thanking me, but all of this could not be done without the support of the school board, very forward-thinking in what they want for this school community, so thank you. We built a budget upon the pillars of our school community and what they identified as important to them before I got here. So this was put together, and since I got here, Mr. Kio and myself and the building leaders and the teachers have put together goals that relate to every single area of preparing our students for excellence, and this budget is based on that. We considered our points of pride, some of which include, and every week I say some of them, so today I want to say, a research-based writing and early literacy program, our fine arts and performing arts programs, and an innovation lab with a corresponding STEAM program. This is just a sample of the budget-supported initiatives that are worthy of celebration. Our students, and you heard our student tonight, we have outstanding students, and they have so many achievements that drive us in this work and in this budget process. Whether they're acceptances to top colleges, inquiry around science, or participation in athletics, arts, and extracurriculars, our students' many achievements underscores the importance of a thoughtful, transparent, and reflective budgeting process. Additionally, our efforts to follow the science and prioritize in-person instruction for our students drove our budget planning throughout the year. We did so much on these asynchronous days, and I thank the teachers for all the learning that they have done to make this year successful for our students. We are proud of the way our administrators, teachers, our parents, our community, and especially our students, rose to the challenges of an unpredictable year and really led the way in the community. Known variables, including state aid, technology needs, and debt services, were all incorporated into our planning as we found them out. While we create a flexibility for unknown variables such as enrollment, we pretty much know it, but kids can move in and out, collective bargaining settlements, and special education placements. The enrollment and sections we anticipate for next year drive most of our budgeting decisions and planning, and you will see when Ms. Liu presents that most of our budget is really towards our faculty and staff. District-wide, our enrollment has remained stable over the years, as you can see with this chart. Next year, we anticipate a total of 1,148 students. Similarly, at Cottle, enrollment is projected to remain stable, requiring no staffing changes to accommodate general education classroom enrollment. Consistent enrollment projections also result in no changes in staffing for the classrooms in the middle school and the high school. Throughout the district, as you can see, enrollment has remained relatively stable and has not necessitated additional staffing because of the numbers of students that we have in the district. But we now turn to what changes are incorporated into this budget. Changes to the curriculum at William E. Cottle School total approximately 33,345. These proposals were highlighted at the March 15th board meeting, and they include enhancements to our early literacy program and ELA curriculum, and I really recommend that people watch this online and see our teachers and our staff in action and the wonderful work they are doing at Cottle, and why we need to get these programs ready for next year. Meanwhile, Mr. Kio and Dr. Linehan presented on the middle school high school proposals and debt at our April 12th board meeting, and they also did an excellent job, and they are requesting approximately $36,000 to strengthen the bridge between elementary math and middle school math, expand our online courses to more advanced placement offerings, and I also suggest you watch this meeting to see our exciting new course in entrepreneurship. And I thank Ms. Case, and I suggest that you go online and watch her present this very exciting new course. Additionally, our buildings have discussed their efforts to incorporate more data and progress monitoring to drive instruction. District-wide, we are requesting an increased 21,400 to support these initiatives, and again, this has been discussed at previous board meetings. Changes in staffing at the elementary school that have previously been presented include the reduction of a school librarian and an expansion of the co-teacher model to each grade level at the elementary school, and the reduction of teacher aides and monitors due to the reunification of classrooms next year. Meanwhile, we are requesting an additional .2 for a math symposium course on top of the planned support for students in next year's 7th grade math program. Therefore, students who will benefit from enrichment will have a symposium that will meet their needs with project-based learning and higher-level math, and students that need more support for that 7th grade curriculum will also be provided that in this course, and they will be in separate courses depending upon their needs. They will be in the same 7th grade class, but again, there's an enrichment course for those who will benefit from that. Lastly, we are requesting additional staffing for our TIGRIS academic support program. This does not represent a new hire, but additional hours for staffing that may be involved in this program. Ultimately, we are adding 1.2 in net new teaching positions and reducing 8.0 full-time equivalents in aides and monitors, resulting in a total reduction in this budget of 6.8 FTEs district-wide. We have also presented on budget additions to support the great work happening with extracurricular offerings, and again, most of our extracurriculars did run this year. As a student, I mentioned Habitat for Humanity, that was something where students would have to be really close together, so that wasn't one of the first ones, you know, when you build a house, you're really not necessarily apart, so that was one of the later ones, and I thank him for coming to me. We have, but for next year, we have put in requests for funds for, first of all, wait a second, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong slide. Give me a second. For the debate team, robotics team, coding club, and web design. So we want to have some very exciting new extracurriculars, really technology-focused, and we're also putting in the panorama school climate survey, so we can really have a survey that really measures the school climate so that we can make changes based on students' Our bold strategic plan is supported through partnership with the Buck Institute and Wilson Reading Program. Next year, we have budgeted for training for our teachers in project-based learning. Foundation's finest instruction, again, if you watched the last board meeting, will be moved to the 3rd grade classes, and Wilson Reading Training will be provided for special education teachers. We have also proposed a budget increase of $20,000 to build up a summer support program to provide intervention and supports for learners identified by their buildings as needing support. This is due to the pandemic, and we're going to be very flexible in providing that support. We know that students, hopefully, summer camps will be open, and our kids want to also get that socialization that they need, so we'll do it similarly to how we did it last year, but there will be more and more students involved. This will help combat learning loss as a result of the pandemic and underscore our commitment to the diverse needs of learners, especially during this pandemic. Budgeted changes in terms of technology include replacement of Chromebooks and whiteboards, two areas in which our use has been heavily concentrated, especially this year. Additionally, we continue to explore ways to improve communication and plan for improvements to our website and our messaging services. We had a team this last reopening of a communication team. We didn't meet a lot, but one of the things we learned is that social media is a great way to communicate with a lot of our families, and we certainly have seen that, so please look at us on Facebook. We put a lot up there, and we're also on Twitter, and we are doing a lot more blessed to parents, but we also are looking at upgrading our website, too, and we've done a nice job at doing that, but some of that is also increasing next year. Lastly, we propose a transfer from the general operation budget to a capital line of $200,000. Again, it's a transfer. This allows the district to make annual renovations and upgrades to maintain and improve our buildings and grounds. The sum of these budget additions and subtractions is an increase of $383,644 to our budget. And now I call up Ms. Lee Liu, who places the spotlight on the fiscal responsibility of this plan.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. To summarize the budget for '21-'22, we are proposing a $36,926,600 budget, which is a budget-to-budget increase over last year of 1.38%. We're also proposing to increase the tax levy by 2.37%. This is compliant with the New York State tax cap, because according to the formula, which I'll show you on the next slide, the district's maximum allowable tax cap limit would be 2.72%, so we are below our maximum allowable limit. This is a copy of the formula that we prepare for the Office of the State Controller. Most of the lines are populated, and we fill in the rest per the requirements of the Office of the State Controller, and this does tell us what our maximum allowable levy limit is. In addition, I do want to point out that we are reserving $85,072 for an over levy from the current fiscal year, which resulted from a change in our debt service requirements for this year. We reported that to the Office of the State Controller. They asked us to reserve that money from this year, not to spend it this year, and we will use it toward next year's budget instead. The proposed expenditure budget of the $36,926,600 is shown here by category. As you can see, most lines are showing very modest budget increases. The largest one is the increase that we are proposing for the transfer to capital, to spend a total of $250,000 by moving an additional $200,000 next year to the capital line for renovations around the district, things that would not normally be provided in a capital bond, smaller maintenance, and renovations to HVAC systems, the auditorium at Cottle, classroom renovations, lighting, windows, other interior renovations, masonry, asphalt, roofing, safety and security upgrades, and things of that nature. This does not all have to be spent in one year, but those are what we are proposing. By object, you can take a look at the various categories of that same budget broken up by the various object lines, and again, you can see that most of the line items are very closely monitored and not increasing very much, except for that capital line particularly. When you look at that expenditure budget graphically, the pie chart will show you that half the budget in blue is our salary expense, and that rose-colored piece next to it is our benefits, so about 3/4 of the district's budget is salaries and benefits, which of course is true of most districts around the state and around the country. Our major expense is an investment in our teachers' administration and the salaries and benefits involved. Now, when we get to state aid, this was a year that had a lot of roller coaster ups and downs regarding what the state could and couldn't do, and then finally, we started with the governor's enacted budget or proposed budget in January, and we ended with the enacted budget just a couple of weeks ago. And from between the governor's proposed budget in January through to the final enacted budget in the state, things changed quite a bit. What we have found is that the New York State has decided to restore the formula that provides foundation aid to all the districts around the state. They will bring all school districts up to at least 60% of what the formula shows that they should be getting, and foundation aid is basically the basic block grant that the state provides as state aid to school districts around the state. There's a formula that they use to factor in wealth and need, and it was a plan to use this formula to make state aid around the state more equitable between school districts and their needs, and it turned out that there were several school districts, particularly in this part of the state, that were severely underfunded as they adjusted this cap over the years, starting with the recession in 2009. Tuckahoe was one of 13 districts that was extremely underfunded by its foundation aid, and now that the state is bringing every district up to at least 60% of their formula, Tuckahoe did see a large restoration of its formula-based aid. It's a three-year process to bring the district up to 100% of its formula. We're seeing the first benefit next year with that increase of 389,000. We're seeing the first benefit next year with that increase of $389,000 to foundation aid. There's no guarantees we'll see the remainder in the next two years, but we have heard strongly worded that it is the intention of the government to finish restoring all districts to their formula, the formula-run aid that they should receive. So we have also learned that we will not be penalized in any takebacks by the state in our state aid this year or next year from our expense-based aids, which are the remaining lines on that budget. And in addition, we even have learned that our transportation aid will cover the costs when we were paying standby costs last year during the period when the school was closed. So that's all good news on the aid that we're expecting next year, and that has helped to change or, or reevaluate how we wanted to approach the budget this year. Just to show you graphically what happened with Tuckahoe and foundation aid over the years, you can see the first four years on that graph, the gray line, the third bar on each year, is the, what the formula would have provided to the district in foundation aid. The first four years were a phase-in for the formula, and then it bumps up in 2011, '12 of what the foundation aid should have looked like for Tuckahoe. The lower lines are the, the, actually, the line in the middle is what the district did receive. The, the large bar on the right of each year is what we should have received. And starting in 2009, '10, or the state started to restrict what they were providing in changes to foundation aid. Different districts around the state were changed over the following years differently, but that's where Tuckahoe ended out. And you can see the three lines at the end of the graph on 2021, '22, which is next year's aid, that orange line in the middle shows a large bump up as we start to approach what we should be receiving in foundation aid. And so that is a commitment that they will fully fund the rest of that in the next two years, and hopefully, that will be the case. So as part of, state aid is part of our proposed revenue budget for next year. In addition to the state aid, we do have an increase of taxes, property taxes, pilots and sales taxes are increasing slightly. We do see some declines in other revenue categories, so that state aid has really helped necessitate or helped alleviate the need to cut program or use more of our appropriated reserves to balance a budget. And graphically, if you take a look at the large blue portion of that pie chart, you'll see that is the portion that is made up by our real property taxes. It's about 80%, slightly over 80% of our budget is provided by the taxpayers in the community. The remaining pieces are the other small revenue portions that we get. The other largest portion after property taxes is the pink portion, which is our state and federal aid at about 9%. Here is a graph that shows our tax levy history. The line on the bottom of the graph is the percent of the increases of our tax levy each year, and over these seven years, our average tax levy increases 1.77%. So as you can see, although the budget has increased every year, the tax levy has been kept relatively flat, and so instead, fund balances have been utilized to balance the budget to avoid cutting program. Comparing budget to budget year-over-year, you can see that in the early years from 2015, '16 through 2018, '19, the budget increased significantly faster, and then now we are pulling back on those increases as enrollment has stabilized, and the budget-to-budget increases have been declining over the last three years. Now, if we want to talk about our savings accounts, our fund balances, and how we save and how we use those to help keep our district stabilized. So the fund balance as of July 1st of this year is a total of $8.5 million, and you may hear that we have $8.5 million fund balance. That's correct. We have all that money set aside as reserves for the district. However, more than half of that $8.5 million is restricted for its usage. So the top four lines show those restricted categories and what we have put them into based on board resolutions and how we have to only use those for those restricted uses. So retirement contributions, tax surcharges is the biggest one, debt service reserve, and employee benefits accrued liabilities, $4.7 million is restricted for use in those categories. In addition, we appropriate each year monies toward balancing the budget, and that restricts the use of those monies as well. So this year, we have appropriated 1 point, I'm sorry, $2.1 million toward balancing the budget, which we hold aside for the entire year, and we cannot touch those funds as well. So what really is remaining is our unassigned fund balance. That's also our savings account, our emergency reserve. The state allows us to keep in that account no more than 4% of our budget, so this year, that equaled $1.456 million. That's the money we use if we run into any unexpected emergencies or anything along those lines, and it's always in the district's best interest to make sure that remains, if possible, at the legally allowed 4%. And so that totals our $8.5 million, and that's what it looked like at the end of the year. If you take a look at how we've used fund balance to help balance the budget, you can see that we have gone from 2015, '16, where it was $1,00173, it was brought down to about $559,000, and then over the last few years, it's been increasing each year in order to balance the budget. So based on the fact that this year there is a influx of additional state aid, it is my recommendation that we use that money to, and we have put into the budget, as Dr. Goodman had said, the programs that she felt were appropriate for the budget for next year. It's my recommendation to use those additional state aid dollars to reduce the reliance on the appropriated fund balance to start to bring that down. That's in the best interest of the district because as, if you keep increasing the appropriated fund balance to balance the budget, at some point, you run out of funds that you can use, and you would have to start cutting program to be able to balance a budget. So to recap where we are, we've proposed a 2.37% tax levy increase for a budget of The baseline revenue budget is $34,961,177 of all our revenues, and then we will balance that remainder with $1,965,423 appropriated from our fund balances. And that's just another recap. We do have a debt, debt service reserve from a premium we received when we went out to the capital markets this year, so that's part of our fund balance that we'll use, but we will appropriate from our unreserved fund balance $1,850,918, and that will balance our budget. This slide just shows you a history of the reserves over the years, and it keeps us within the tax cap and it avoids cuts. This is a slide for anyone's reference on the American Rescue Plan Act. It's one of the federal grants that was provided in January that has to be used toward providing relief from the pandemic, and there are specific ways that it will be used and accounted for by the district. And it's not just placed in the general fund. We have to keep it in a special fund and provide the federal government with the way we use the money. Our allocation for this grant is $315,000, and it can be used over several years. If the district's budget is not passed by the community, we would have to go to a contingency budget, and that's a formula that's provided by the state as to how that's calculated, and based on the calculation, we would be required to cut $690,630 from the proposed budget in order to meet a contingency budget. Again, just to recap, we also are proposing on the budget vote a capital project for the completion of a Cottle field, various large renovations to spaces at Cottle and the middle school, high school, some infrastructure needs at both buildings, and ventilation upgrades to both buildings. It's a budget right now of $9.9 million, and voter approval is needed to proceed, and there will be a separate proposition at the budget vote on May 18th to vote for this project. A possible start date for the field renovations is projected to be fall 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Liu, for those details, and thank you for giving your suggestions to how we close the gap, and, you know, of course, that's my recommendation to the board, too. I want to go through some of the budget highlights which you see up here. In conclusion, the budget we have put forth for adoption includes highlights such as favorable class sizes, responsive professional learning, and cutting-edge instructional experience for our students. We continue to build on our work with math coherence and early literacy. This budget also expands opportunities for advanced courses by introducing more opportunities for online and innovative courses. All our proposals are directly linked to our strategic plan. And here are your important dates. So you see that, again, I, I hope you look at the March 15th and March 21st meeting, where there were great presentations by our middle school, high school administration and our elementary school administration with Mr. Keough's leadership. April 20th, which is tonight, is the night that we hope the board adopts the budget, and May 10th is a budget hearing, and the important date to put on your calendar is May 18th, which is the annual budget vote, and also on that proposition will be the capital project bond vote. So please get out and vote. It's very important for our schools. Again, I just want to thank everybody because it's my pleasure to be superintendent of this great district with wonderful teachers, administration, school board, and community members.
Do you want to just roll into the capital?
Okay, so I, I, I'm just going to...
Do you want to get the rest?
Oh, it's, it's up to you what you want to do. I was just going to talk about the capital projects and hope that the board also... Let's go.
All right. I don't think we need too much discussion on this because we've talked about it quite a bit. Just one clarification from me, Ms. Liu. The, the 1.965 fund balance that we're allocating to balance the budget, that exceeds the 1.4 unallocated fund balance we have right now, but I'm assuming that we're not expecting to use all the 2.1 that was allocated this year.
That's correct.
Is that right? Do we have an idea how much of that 2.1 we're going to be using?
At this point, we don't believe we'll be using any of it because we have been reinstated with all the state aid that we were concerned about, as well as some other revenues that came in better than expected throughout the year.
Right.
So at this point, we're just about neutral. We may even have a very, very modest surplus.
Yep, that's excellent. Okay, very good. Yeah, and I completely agree with what you guys put forth in terms of the long-term plan. I am, I have continued to be concerned about the budget deficit, and, and I think that what's been proposed makes a lot of sense going forward, which is to use that increased foundation aid over the next couple of years to, to close that gap and try and keep our expenditures increases to within whatever we're, we're increasing on the tax levy, I think makes a lot of sense. And with a lot of the investments we made this year, hoping, most of those investments for the strategic plan we made this year, we should be able to do that. So I'm definitely going to be holding you guys to that next year, I'll tell you right now. So, so, because it's been, it's been quite a few years in a row that we've been, we've been having a pretty big... But then again, on the flip side of that, it's very rare that we've actually used all of that fund balance each year. It's always come in under, but, but I still think we need to get on that, on the trajectory of getting that flattened out, so. But you guys obviously said that, so we're all on the same page. Anybody have any other questions or concerns about the budget? We talked about it, you know, quite a bit, so I think, I think we're good. All right. Capital project, do you want to just give a look at it?
Yeah, I want to give a little more information about the capital project because I know some of you, many of you are very interested in that. I did give something like this at the Eastchester Town Board. I will also be going to the Tuckahoe board meeting, too. Tonight, I want to share more information so that it's clear what the bond... I know you've seen so many PowerPoints on it, but I could put it together in words. So one of the main things on this bond is the upgrade to the Cottle Elementary playing, and playing field, which is, I think, people really are interested in that, and upgrades to the playground, actually, moving of the playground and upgrade. This proposal also provides interior renovations and security upgrades at the middle and high school. But mainly, the Cottle field has long been a trouble spot for the community and for Cottle. A full renovation of the field and the installation of artificial turf is something that will benefit the Cottle students and also our community. During the school day, the school, the field will, of course, be used for students. After school, the field can be used for sports. It'll be a half-size football field in synthetic turf, and it'll be used for practices for middle and high school sports as well. A walking track around the field will be a community benefit, and it'll be available during off-hours. At Cottle, we are looking to renovate and expand the cafeteria, and anybody who's been in the cafeteria at Cottle will welcome this. So we plan to expand out about six or seven feet and add windows that connect to the street and the playground. And you'll see this on Thursday night. You'll see our architect will show you some drawings. This will, and also a simulation. This will dramatically improve the atmosphere and will make a big difference. It will feel like a next-generation cafeteria and a friendly gathering space for our students. Also in the planning stage is complete renovation of two of the oldest bathrooms, playground upgrades, as I said, and converting, this is exciting, to Cywinoy Boulevard into a usable play space while maintaining its capacity as a road for emergency vehicles and parent drop-off. So also, infrastructure is important. During the pandemic, it became obvious that air quality in buildings is a top priority. At Cottle Middle School and the High School, the bond proposal will produce healthier indoor air that can be cooled also to provide air conditioning. The older classrooms in the middle school, high school, and at Cottle meet the building code now, but post-pandemic, everyone is feeling more and more obligated to have every space, no matter what its age, meet today's highest standards. So what we're proposing for Cottle and the older classrooms in the middle school and high school is dedicated outside air unit called energy recovery unit. It actually uses heat from the air exiting through the unit to pre-warm and heat the fresh air that's coming in, but they never cross over. The system transfers that to heat. All the fresh air being pumped in is new, and there is no recycled air. The system has a high level of filtration, filtration, but most importantly, you're not recycling the air that's in the rooms. You're bringing 100% new, fresh air in, in an energy-efficient way. We plan to install something called variable refrigeration units. They recycle the air and cool it or heat it, again, but again, you're getting the fresh air from the energy recovery system. This heating/cooling VRF unit will provide individual control in each room, so you're not dealing with, and I see our union president is here, and we always find that some classrooms are freezing, some classrooms are hot, but people in these classrooms will have their own thermostat, thermostat, and it's also very cost-effective. At Tuckahoe Middle School and High School, we are planning to upgrade the library, which we're in right now, upgrade the cafeteria, and install air conditioning and better filtration to the exiting ductwork in the new wing. The older classrooms will have the same outside air with the VRF. The middle school and high school cafeteria, which also hasn't changed in quite a number of years, and anybody who's been in it knows that needs refurbishing, we will have new furniture, finishing, slider, and lighting, and a serving area to make it brighter, more popular space. That room is used every period of every day, so it's a lot more than a cafeteria and a really important space in the school, and it deserves an updated, modern appearance. A substantial amount of money, I'm sorry, a certain amount of masonry restoration work needs to be done to preserve this beautiful historic building. Also planned is a critical life safety improvement in both buildings, an upgrade to the fire alarm systems. Other infrastructure items include an accessible ramp, stone and masonry repairs, the historic facade, hardware and security, some stair railings, certainly a replacement of the gym floor, and fire alarm systems with, again, the mechanical ventilation upgrades. The cost of the project is $9.9 million overall, with the majority of money this time being spent in the middle school and high school. The entire project will fully qualify for state aid. Approximately 24% of the cost of the project will be reimbursed by New York State. In addition, interest rates and construction pricings are, we heard from our architect, very attractive at this time. We estimate the cost of the project... the cost of the project to the median homeowner would be $266 a year. Detailed planning would happen right after a successful bond vote. The playing field improvements and related work at Cottle, which I know everybody's very excited about that playing field, again, Lou explained that that would be something that we can start much sooner, as soon as we got approval, or work would be completed probably by the start of 2023 and perhaps sooner. But again, we would prioritize certain areas and get started right away. We are very excited, of course, to bring this project to the Tuckahoe School community. Again, there will be a separate proposition to authorize this project on the ballot with the annual budget vote. Please cast your vote for, for the annual budget as well as for the bond. Thank you.
Great. And just a reminder, too, to everybody, that the $9.9 million bond does include all the field renovations, as Dr. Goodman said, and the $300,000 or so that was left over from the first bond that was supposed to be allocated towards the lesser renovation, that basically is just cut... We're not borrowing that money. We borrowed it short-term, but it's going to be, be applied towards the long-term debt. So essentially, the first bond cost us $300,000 and change less, and now we're incorporating that cost into this bond. So if that was any, if that was confusing to anybody, I think originally when we first started discussing this, we thought we could just bring that money over, but it doesn't work that way. But essentially, we are, we're getting the credit in the sense that we're not paying as much for the first bond, and then we're bonding out for it this time around.
Exactly.
Yeah. But anyway, very good update on that. And we're going to be having a Zoom Town Hall discussion or presentation on Thursday, 7:30. I think an email went out already about that, and a flyer went out. So please, please join if you'd like. And helpful if you, if you email your questions ahead of time, but we will have an ongoing live chat. So if you have any questions during the discussion, you can, you can bring it up.
Great. It will be also, again, I'll go to, I went to the town in Eastchester. I'll go to Town Hall to do a presentation for the Tuckahoe Community Village. And also, we'll have another Zoom Town Hall, and we're going to do a presentation to the PTA. So we'll be around. There'll be lots of information in case people can't sign on. And people can also go to our website because there's, the presentations are there.
Will we be recording via Town Hall?
Yes.
Yeah. Will we record it?
Yeah, so we'll put it on our website, too. So in case you can't go, watch at your leisure.
Perfect. All right. Great. Any board members have any comments or discussions about that, or we're good?
No.
All right. Okay.
Does anyone have anything else?
I don't think so. More to come. We're going to keep communicating. Fliers will be going, I mean, mailers will be going out. So there'll be plenty, plenty going out. So, all right. Next is our comments by the Assistant Superintendent for Business. Do you have anything additional?
No, I don't.
All right. And this brings us to our first recognition of the audience. And I'll give the first slot to Ms. Mealy if she has anything from the PTA.
If I could just say something, because I know I didn't get to say this and the student did, we so appreciate the Tuckahoe PTA. The programs that they bring to our community, really, I've never worked in a school district that had such a high-level PTA. Not to put down any of the other districts I worked in, but I realize where I am, but they were great, too.
Well, thank you for saying that.
Appreciate that.
I must say, I'm sorry, I'm Susan Mealy. I'm the PTA president. And I am super proud of our board. I really expected that, you know, some of our board members, when they signed on last year, would bail, you know? I mean, who could blame anyone? But everybody has really held in there all year, and they're working hard, and I'm really in awe of my, my peers there. So thank you for that recognition. Okay, I have so much to say. I'm going to try to be quick. But I'm going to go kind of top-line because I don't want to dominate the meeting here. But I do want to just encourage everybody to go to our website and our social media accounts and sign up for our School B newsletter, because those are great ways to get the details on what I'm going to mention just top-line. And we want to make sure that families know what we're doing so that they could take full advantage. Okay, so first, I just want to acknowledge a few things that have happened recently. Our Health and Safety Committee was approached, well, we were approached by some Cottle teachers to see if we would be able to sponsor an anti-bullying assembly. And our Health and Safety Committee took that on and provided that for grades K through five via Zoom format. And we got some nice feedback from that. And we're very pleased to be able to, you know, to honor teacher requests. So we always encourage teachers to come to us with their wish list because sometimes we make dreams come true. We also, our PUP Committee, which is Pick a Reading Partner, celebrated March's Reading Month with two virtual author visits that they sponsored, and also some giveaways to encourage reading, and the very popular Storytime with the principal and assistant principal. So everybody gathered up their PJs and their teddy bears and had storytime with Mr. Marash and Mr. Kilgallen. And we are planning to do something like this again next month, and really appreciate Mr. Kilgallen and Mr. Marash for being such good sports to offer kids that wonderful event. As Therese mentioned, we have been making it our goal this year to populate the asynchronous learning days to make, to provide more enrichment for our kids who are at home and don't have a rigid agenda. And yesterday, we had a lot going on. Our Math and Science Committee sponsored a virtual assembly for grades K to five by Mad Science, which is a very humorous STEM troupe, and that was a lot of fun. And our High School Committee sponsored the first of what we hope will be several career panels, where this, this particular one focused on careers in the arts. And we had six professionals representing a variety of disciplines in the arts fields who got on a Zoom and answered questions about how they got to where they are. They're very successful, highly accomplished people. We had an opera singer who was a Tuckahoe alumnus. That was really cool. We had an animator. We had a storybook writer and illustrator. We had a violinist who's toured with Barbra Streisand and Rod Stewart. And six panelists who were absolutely phenomenal. I was privileged enough to sit in on that and wound up rather choked up by how fabulous it was, because they not only talked about their careers, they gave the most magnificent advice to kids that transcends the arts, you know? One of my favorite comments was from the violinist, "Even if you're asked to play a piece of music that you hate, you think it's garbage, play it beautifully." You know, things like about ethics and standards and how to, you know, respect your mentors and invest in your education and master your craft. And all these messages, I really hope, were really well-received by the kids because even if they don't wind up in the arts, they got some great values yesterday. And Mr. Duchateau, our strings teacher, was absolutely instrumental, no pun intended, in making this happen because he knows all these people personally. And he brought them to the table and put a lot of time into this. So we thank him and Mr. Tobin for help with that. So we're hoping to do another couple panels this year in different subject areas and are open to input. Also, our Scholarship Committee has been working with our High School Guidance Department to raise awareness of the availability of six scholarships that we make available every year to seniors. Each scholarship is valued at $1,000, and there's an application process. Its applications are due on April 30th. So anybody who has a senior, I encourage to learn more about this. And our Programs Committee is in the process of planning our general meeting where we invite members of the community to join us, in this case, online, for a forum about what the PTA is doing with a guest speaker. And we did an informal survey about what the speaker should focus on and learned that everybody's very, very interested in the subject of social-emotional learning and how that's going to play out in our district. So that will be the topic with Dr. Goodman and a representative from Rethink explaining what it is and how it's going to be utilized. So stay tuned for that. We're very excited. And also, in the early stages of planning, our, we're working on the fifth-grade luau as an end-of-year tradition at Cottle, as well as graduation activities for all the schools. We're working on plans to bring back our annual Building Bridges Program and Taste of Tuckahoe. And our PTA Dance Committee is working on recital plans. Our Community Service Committee encourages the community to volunteer for a cleanup of the Bronx River on May 1st. And that's just the beginning. Now, all of this, you know, we've been trying to be really scrappy with our funds this year because we know that, you know, we don't want to bother our community for money this year, you know? Everybody's in different situations, challenges economically and so forth. And so I hope everybody notices that we have not been putting our hand out very much this year, and we've been trying, you know, to work with a small budget. But we do thank those who supported our plant sale, our spring plant sale. Those will be delivered on Saturday, May 1st. And our PTA membership is still a possibility. You don't have to worry about joining so late in the year. You still can. And being a PTA member is a great way to show support for all the work that we do and helps underwrite our programs. We also, I'm winding down. I'm sorry. This is so super long. Our Nominating Committee has announced the vacant positions on our Executive Board for next year, and I encourage everybody to take a look at that and apply to be one of us, be part of this great team that does all these great things. And we welcome, we look forward to welcoming Dr. Goodman as our guest speaker at our next Executive Board Meeting. We're going to go over the budget and the capital improvement bond project, and that'll take place on May 4th. And we look forward to having you as our guest. Thank you very much for your time. Again, I hope you'll follow us on social media and sign up for our newsletter so you will be up to date on everything that we're doing, because I probably left a few things out even. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Great stuff. Really good stuff. Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to speak about anything on the agenda?
Allison Halloran. I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Goodman, for adding in the enrichment to the math seventh grade program. It is really, really appreciated. Myself and the other parents who reached out to you regarding that issue are just so grateful for it to you. For 12 years, I've been advocating for enrichment for students who need it. And this is the first time that I feel like our voice has been heard and action has been taken quickly, and we're really looking forward to it. And I just want to say thank you. And I echo what Laura said in the beginning. The community is so lucky and so fortunate to have you leading us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Halloran.
I would like to also thank Mr. Keough and Dr. Linehan. Really were instrumental in getting that, you know? I just, I just like to sit here and, you know, make a suggestion that you make. And it really was Mr. Keough and Dr. Linehan and us all putting, with the teachers, actually, the math teachers, too, and putting our heads together and doing that. But thank you so much. I appreciate that coming from you.
Thank you.
So good. So good.
All right. Anybody else? That's it? Okay. So next, we'll move on to our Consent Agenda. Motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Items 2 through 5. Do I have a motion? Laurie, second. Laura, any discussion about any of the items on here? Pretty straightforward, I think. All in favor? This is the business of the board. Adopt a budget. Resolve that Tuckahoe Union Free School District, District 2021, 2022 proposed budget be set at $36,926,600, and that this proposed budget be voted on by the community at the annual meeting on May 18th, 2021, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Therese, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Approve a property tax report. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approved the property tax report card for the 2021, 2022 school year, and authorized the Assistant Superintendent for Business to submit it to the State Education Department. Do I have a motion? Therese, second. Laurie, any discussion? All in favor? Southwest Boce's 2021, 2022 budget. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves the 2021, 2022 estimated administrative budget for the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Education Services in the amount of $193,635,967. Do I have a motion? Therese, second. Laurie, any discussion? All in favor? Prove Southern Westchester Boce's trustee. Resolve that the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District cast one vote for John V. Philiberty to serve as trustee of the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Education Services for the time period of July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Therese, second. Second?
Oh, sorry.
Laura, any discussion? All in favor? Approve a tax anticipation note. Tax anticipation note. Resolution that Tuckahoe Union Free School District, New York, adopted April 20th, 2021, authorizing issuance of not to exceed $2 million tax anticipation notes in anticipation of the receipt of taxes to be levied for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, resolved by the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District and resolved by the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District... Oh, I'm sorry. I just read that twice. The county of Westchester, New York, as follows. Section 1. Tax anticipation notes herein called notes. Tuckahoe Union Free School District in the county of Westchester, New York, herein called a district, in the principal amount not to exceed $2 million on any notes in renewal thereof, and hereby authorized to be issued pursuant to the provisions of Section 24 and 39 of the local finance law constituting Chapter 33A of the Consolidated Laws of the State of New York, herein called the law. Section 2. The following additional matters are hereby determined and declared. The notes shall be issued in anticipation of the collection of real estate taxes to be levied for school purposes for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022, and the proceeds of the notes shall be used only for the purposes for which said taxes are levied. B. The notes shall mature within the period of one year from the date of their issuance. C. The notes are not issued in renewal of other notes. And D. The total amount of such taxes remains uncollected at the date of adoption of this resolution. Section 3. The notes hereby authorized shall contain the recital validity prescribed by Section 52 of the law and shall be general obligations to the district and the faith of the credit of the district are hereby pledged to the punctual payment of the principal of, principal of and interest on the notes, and unless the notes are otherwise paid or payment provided for, an amount sufficient for such payment shall be inserted in the budget of the district and tax sufficient to provide for the payment thereof shall be levied and collected. Section 4. Subject to the provisions of this resolution and the law and pursuant to Sections 50, 56, 60, and 61 of the law, the power to sell and issue the notes authorized pursuant heretofore or any renewals thereof, and to determine the terms, form, and contents, including the manner and execution, I'm sorry, the manner of execution of such notes, and to execute tax certifications relative thereto, is hereby delegated to the President of the Board of Education, the Chief Fiscal Officer of the District. Section 5. The notes shall be executed in the name of the District by the manual signature of the President of the Board of Education, the Vice President of the Board of Education, the District Treasurer, the District Clerk, or such other officer of the District as shall be designated by the Fiscal Officer of the District, and shall have the corporate seal of the District impressed or imprinted thereon, which corporate seal may be attested by the manual signature of the District Clerk. Section 6. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Therese, any discussion on any of that? Everybody got it? All right. All in favor?
Repeat it, Pete.
Read it again.
I missed Section 3.
Resolve that the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves the proposal from Jody Priceok to provide sign language interpretation services not to exceed $225. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Therese, any discussion? All in favor? Approve a contract. Resolve to approve a contract agreement for the, with Four Winds Hospital to provide tutorial services, services 10 hours per week at a rate... 10 hours per week at a rate of $16 per hour at an amount not to exceed $2,000. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Second. Laura, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Prove a professional development services agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tukahoe Union Free School District approves and an agreement with PBL Works for Professional Development Services for the period of April 19, 2021, through May 17, 2021, at an amount not to exceed $11,250. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Teres, all in favor? Number 9. Grievance Decision. Whereas the Board of Education has received a request from the CSEA dated January 23, 2021, for rehearing on its grievance at Level 3, and whereas the Board of Education has reviewed the positions of the parties and has deliberated thereon, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Tukahoe Union Free School District hereby denies the CSEA its grievance, consistent with its decision dated April 20, 2021, which is approved herein and directs the District Clerk to issue said decision to the Superintendent of Schools and the CSEA. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Second. Laura, any discussion? All in favor? All right. And last, is our personnel recommendations. Resolve that the Board of Education, Tukahoe Union Free School District approves personnel action items A through D as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Cynthia, any discussion? All in favor? Great. This brings us to our second recognition of the audience, if anybody that has anything they want to say for non-agenda items.
This feels like I'm accepting an award. I've never been up here.
It's a power position.
And I don't want to touch anything, anybody's things. All right. Is this okay? You can hear me okay?
Yep.
Thanks. All right. Well, good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Goodman, PTA President Mealy, parents, families, and members of the Tukahoe community. I'm speaking to you this evening about an issue that I believe affects many members of the Tukahoe Union Free School District, and that issue is reliable and affordable before and after-school care historically held at Coddle. Several recent articles in the New York Times, the Wall Street Journal, and pretty much every parent's blog online have reported on the avalanche of responsibilities that have fallen on parents, in particular mothers, due to the pandemic and subsequent hybrid school schedules. As a working mother of three myself, I can speak personally on this. As Tukahoe School District residents, we must consider ourselves in a far more fortunate situation than many of our neighboring districts, as this board, this superintendent, our administrators, teachers, and staff have been able to secure in-person learning for our youngest members of the community since the very first day of school, and an increasing in-person schedule throughout the course of the year for our middle and upper-grade students. However, given that we are a full year into the situation, the topic of before and after-school care and summer camp, specifically task, still lingers, causing stress for many families who depend on and look forward to these services. Additionally, programs like Task, a staple in our small community, offer fun, engaging activities that support our younger children's ability to build relationships with peers, as well as with the older Tukahoe students from the high school who work as task counselors. As you are all aware, Tukahoe High School students have long served as employees of Task, oftentimes after having spent their childhoods participating in morning and after-school programming or summer camp themselves. You may not be aware, however, that throughout the nine weeks that our schools were closed last spring, Task staff offered free programming five days a week from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Casey and Marino facilitated yoga and fitness classes. Kyle organized trivia contests, scavenger hunts, and set up breakout rooms for the kids to chat in, weeks before the teachers had begun their virtual class sessions, giving our children their desperately needed time to socialize and engage with their classmates and friends. Casey, Marino, Kyle, and the Task staff did this every day at no cost to our families because they love our kids, and we need to do something about reopening Task because we love them back. A year into this current situation, many of our community members' ability to work remotely on the asynchronous Mondays, to adjust their schedules around a slightly later start time in the morning and a slightly earlier end time in the afternoon, is coming to an end. Where we once found understanding bosses and colleagues who could laugh off the embarrassing moments when kids Zoom-bombed their parents' presentations, we now wonder why those same parents can't get this under control yet. The words equity and inequity have been increasingly used when discussing internet access and device issues, computer literacy, and even last month by our district's architect, when he explained the equity issue in our students' access to ventilation in the new rooms once Coddle's capital project is passed. I don't think I'm overstepping when I use the word myself, when I discuss our diverse community's access to safe, affordable, and yes, fun childcare and social opportunities for our kids. One of Tukahoe's most beloved characteristics is its diverse population, and with that comes the need for a diverse set of approaches to meeting its needs, oppressing one being an answer to when task, morning, after-school, and camp will reopen. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration as you navigate the heavy burden you've all been given during this marathon response to COVID-19.
Thank you. Can I get you to state your name and your address?
My address?
Yeah, well, that's what people usually do, yeah.
Deirdre Callahan. I'm a Coddle mother of two, and you will be getting my third in September.
Great.
And I live on Allen Place in Chester Heights.
Great, thank you, Deirdre. Appreciate it.
Not that we usually engage in conversation, because it's supposed to be just public comment, but we are in discussions with Task. I hope that they have shared that with parents, I don't know if they have yet, both about summer camp and before and after school for next year, and they're still under some different regulations than we are about how many feet apart they have to be, but they're first on our list to do anything with.
I guess part of it is, I received all of the notifications in the mail from East Chester Camps, Camp Rainbow, all of the other programs that are going on in our community, and it's ambiguous about Task, so I know that it's under discussion, but it's still quite.
I think they'll send something soon.
Yeah, thank you.
But thank you.
We want Task.
Yeah, your comments were excellent, and it's been top of mind for us on the board, and I know Dr. Goodman as well.
We've had multiple meetings. Miss Mealy has been involved, talking about space and how we're going to do that.
I've spoken to.
But I'll wait till they do that.
Yeah, I've spoken to Casey myself, as a matter of fact, too, so it's definitely, it's definitely top of mind, we're with you 100% on how important it is and how valuable it is to the community.
Very well stated. It's an invaluable program.
Mr. Marash was on the call, and Mr. Kilgallen, and we talked about space and all of that, and summer.
It was actually nice to hear a lot of the things, because I didn't know some of the things that they had done, like we all agree that how valuable they are, but I didn't hear that, so it was nice to hear that. So, glad.
Great. Okay, anybody else? Nope. All right, that's the end of our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Teres, second. Cynthia, all in favor? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.